I'd like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total two hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-six cents.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Approval of the consent agenda passes. Remarks of visitors. Tonight, we have Michael Povich. Mr. Povich, you're out. And I would like to remind you, sir, that for the remarks of visitors, you have five minutes.
Howdy. Howdy, everybody. Father give thanks to the Lord, Lord Jesus Christ, forgive us the grace they have a country we have and our early responders, our military past and present, and most of the early founders. Um, I have a brochure here for everybody up there, and I'm gonna make my presentation. I got for the uh purpose founders and the mayor, chief administrator, administrator, council members, city attorneys, and the city clerk. We've had them down. Please take your one hour for you and one for you, please. Okay, I got a couple of requests here. I'm requesting response on why the thirty mile an hour speed limit is not being enforced from the eight hundred block, eleven block, Orion Road. Uh, there must be a reason why it's not being enforced. Um, I didn't basically a lot of curiosity, because like last night, I don't know, like um there's a whole slew of them come by, like a mini motorcycle gang. It reminded me of Saigon many years ago. They little dudes ride around on motorbikes, uh, mini motorcycles, they call them cowboys. But as we like, they're riding both sides of the street. And uh, it it's really out of control. I don't blame the police department. I blame um administration. Um, it should be addressed, should have been addressed a long time ago. Um, public safety is the hallmark of civic responsibility, and it's imperative and crucial for the residents that are affected by this miscarriage of proper public safety protocol. And the other one request response on why Florida water is compelled for the residents by the Jefferson County Water Department. Hydrochloric acid is a proven carcinogenic chemical that being administered with the public informed without public informed approved consent. Harry Truman said, I know y'all are Harry Truman fans down here. Public office is a privilege, not a right, and people accept the privilege, hold knowledge in all forms of the government must have necessity accept their entire conduct, be open to inspection by the people they are elected to serve. I will add that the sixty-seven percent increase for public officials fairly recently was very disingenuous and outrageous to many Festus residents who have been struggling financially with this terrible inflation nationwide. And um and I got printouts here of um I gave before about the signs where it would be good viable, put the stop signs on Orion Road, Savannah Place, Central Orion Road. I got pictures of what's in our water, hydrochloric acid. And I got a printout here of breakdown of it, and I tried to explain it before. I've been studying this for thirty-six years. You know, and it's gotta stop, it's poison, and it's illegal. People uh are naive. They don't have all the facts. There's a multitude, and I guess some of you use books on it, by a very prominent ortho- orthopedic surgeon, orthodontist, rather. And um it's a, what do you call it? A systemic poison. That could kill you right away and does all kinds of different things to different parts of your endocrenal system, your body, your cardiovascular system. And when it was implemented after World War Two, they hired a guy named Edward Bernadette. And he's PR specialist. And it's a scam. It's unhealthy. It's not right. Need be stopped. But why are people down here, they have this in the water? And like I said, there is, there's no informed approved consent. Now, this is in the Nuremberg Act. I mean, I would say that's pretty significant. And um that's my piece, you know. Well, I'd like to have a response why the P one is not being enforced. You know, the good thing to do will be that like they have it over the safety program over in uh, Danny Bros. You got top gun. And you got three months remaining. And there was uh the living. You know, safety. And uh I have a response why they did not being enforced.
We will get back with you.
The uh
Mr. Povich. Mr. Povich, your five minutes is out. Thank you very much for your comments. We will be getting back with you. Mr. Teepole, that was scheduled to um speak is not here. Bids, Police Department.
So the night in front of you, I have a bid for, it's called a Sotoxide device. It is a saliva um testing kit that you can use on an impaired driver to try to determine any drugs that are in their system by using the saliva in their mouth. Um, we've received a grant that will cover the majority of the cost of this. It is a reimbursable grant, so we will purchase this upfront for five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and then the grant will reimburse us five thousand, six hundred dollars for that.
Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amount of five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for a purchase of a Sotoxide machine from intoxication meters.
Some of
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, Chief, next.
The next thing in front of you, um, with the newest vehicles we just purchased, they have out, what's the running board, emergency warning lights now. We put those on our new Durangos. We've gotten very good feedback from our officers as far as increased um visibility when approaching intersections and people coming up from the sides. So what we would like to do is use some of the money from our Purple Wave surplus auction and go ahead and put those same running board lights on the remaining twenty-one cars in our fleet. So we got a bid from um Public Safety Upfitters, which is the company that is our code three provider for those lighting, and this would be directly from the code three manufacturer through those. And then we also got bids for the installation. Um, so the bid from Public Safety Upfitters for the light sand installation came to twenty-four nine eighty-three. If we buy the lights from Public Safety and then have wireless, do the installs, it is twenty-six thousand, five fifty-nine. So what we're requesting is to accept a bid from twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars to have these lights put on the rest of our cars at Public Safety Upfitters. They are located in the Fenton area.
Any discussion?
Chief, I um was in the city the other day, and there was a police car that had someone pulled over, and they were lighting it up with the lights on there, and it was so much more visible than what I see down here. So I think it's a good move you're making for your officers' safety and for the safety of all those around. So I think it's a good job.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve purchasing the lights from Public Safety Upfitters for twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Motion passes. One more thing.
That's all of mine.
I have a took those off. Okay.
Sorry.
Never mind.
Under five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was taken off. Not my fault, guys.
It's mine.
It's not yours either. Water Department, Water Main Replacement.
So this staff report is for the replacement of the water lines and service taps on Moore and Ann Street. Uh, we have already nearly finished our completion on Fifth Street, and so they will be moving on to Moore and Ann. And this is just the cost of parts for doing that installation.
And that is
Is that affecting all the waters?
Mike. Dave and Mike.
Is that affecting the water like up in Gray Street? Like, because I'm getting some complaints up there about low water pressure and such.
So low water pressure, uh, that could be happening when flushing from hydrants. We do have to keep flushing for doing our bacteria tests.
Bacteria test.
Uh, however, I know we've gotten a complaint about some of the darker water, some of the sediment in there, and that would happen because we are having to exercise some of the valves up there. So every time we have to, we kind of slowly move our way north, we'll cap something, and it just disturbs the water. It'll usually be a few days that it needs to work its way out, and then unfortunately, we're gonna have to work our way onto Moore and Ann Street, have to cap again.
Okay. Got something to tell them. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid from Core and Main in the sum of twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
I'll move. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook. Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinances and resolutions.
Sir, if I could just jump in for a moment?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, if the Baron Council uh will indulge us, um, I apologize. I was out of the office at the end of last week. Um, and when Leah sent the agenda over to me, I was probably under the influence of an undue uh amount of cough medicine at the time. Um, so therefore, um, I I would hope that we would be able to uh group some of these ordinances and resolutions together, uh, because they go together. Uh, specifically, Bills forty-seven eighty-five and Resolution forty-seven eighty-six and a half. Um, eighty-five deals with obviously the adoption of our new um technical codes. It's the update from the two thousand nine to the twenty-twenty-one um ICC. And then forty-seven eighty-six and a half is the fee schedule that goes with that. Um, and then we would jump to forty-seven eighty-seven, uh, because Mark would already be at the podium, and he can talk about the conditional use permit. And then if council is agreeable, we would then go back and get uh the hazard mitigation plan, which is forty-seven eighty-five and a half. Um, and then forty-seven eighty-six, uh, which is the special tax bills. If council's agreeable, um, and the mayor's agreeable, we'd like to do that this evening.
That's fine.
Make it so.
Make it so. All right.
Yeah.
Mark, the show is all yours. If you would like to discuss these things in that particular order, but first uh a reading of Bill forty-seven eighty-five.
Forty-seven eighty-five.
You do your job, sir.
Yes.
Was she gonna read all them together then?
No, no.
Just
It's just the order.
Okay.
Kind of quick, would you please read Bill forty-seven eighty-five for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending section five hundred point zero one zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding the adoption of technical codes enacting section five hundred point zero one five regarding amendments to the technical codes, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven eighty-five is now for discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, as you heard, this is the adoption of the new building codes, uh, the twenty-twenty-one cycle. Uh, we did file this with Leah um in April. Uh, we actually went through a council, uh, the meeting in uh April as well. I'm sorry, with planning and zoning uh for the first time. Uh, we're currently under the two thousand nine. Typically, uh ICC codes update every three years along with the NEC. This puts us about five code cycles behind. Um, we've been meeting with all the surrounding jurisdictions, uh, all the other building officials, and uh everyone else has mostly moved up to newer codes and are planning to go to the twenty-twenty-one as well, kind of get everybody in the county on the same page. Uh, most designers and builders are already using more advanced codes than two thousand nine. Fact compass on the shop and save, they actually designed it to twenty-twenty-one and are using that code because they literally had no one in office that could do two thousand nine code. It's how outdated it is. Uh, the last time these were updated was July two thousand twelve. And if we go forward, I don't anticipate it for another five or six years.
Is there any councilman that wishes Bill forty-seven eighty-five to be uh placed on the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-seven eighty-five for the second time in title only?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven eighty-five for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending section five hundred point zero one zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding the adoption of technical codes enacting section five hundred point zero one five regarding amendments to the technical codes, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven eighty-five has passed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Now we have resolution forty-seven eighty-six and a half. Would the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution number forty-seven eighty-six and a half, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, approving the updated fee schedule for certain building permits and authorizing the director of building and planning to adjust the fees when necessary.
Resolution forty-seven eighty-six and a half is now open for discussion. Can I have the staff report?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Okay.
Uh, this is the fee adjustments um for all of our building permits and et cetera. Backing up, it's actually been two thousand seven was last time these were updated, so that's seventeen years ago. We did work with Lashley and Bear in developing this resolution. It's in line with uh surrounding jurisdictions. We're actually bringing ourselves up to some of the fees that they're charging now. Um, they're fairly modest for no increase in seventeen years. The uh ICC actually updates their uh fee schedule every six months. So that the ability for me to be able just to do that without having to come revisit you every six months is what we're looking to do.
Is there any discussion?
Greg. For departmental fees like this, that sometimes get forgotten about or just, and then we've realized we're twenty years behind CPI index. Would it be wise to create an ordinance and have this reviewed every three, five years by ordinance? It uh, it is. It also, if you uh, the ordinance, or I should say, the resolution does call out, it allows the building and planning director to uh review the fees as necessary. Um, obviously, any changes would need to be brought to council. Um, but it gives Mark essentially the the hammer to be able to say, instead of doing this annually as needed, if we're six months from now and ICC publishes a new uh fee schedule, and it turns out there was a massive jump, uh, he would be able to bring that to you sooner than on an annual basis.
Is there any other discussion? Could I have a motion to approve Resolution forty-seven eighty-six and a half?
Oh, moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Resolution forty-seven eighty-six and a half has passed.
Thank you again, all. Thank you.
We also have Bill number forty-seven eighty-seven on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, approving the conditional use permit for one fifteen Brierton and establishing an effective date.
Could I have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the conditional use for a lodging home at one fifteen Brierton. This is the former rectory there of Catholic Church. It's currently zoned um B three, which is the correct zoning for this use uh conditionally. Uh, similar to what we did back in October of twenty twenty-two with one thirty-two North Adams. The rest of the uh zoning building codes would be met. Um, PNZ recommended this for approval on the fifteenth uh week and a half ago. And that also can yield to, uh, they have a representative here, Mr. Chris Oakley, if y'all have any direct questions about the usage.
Mr. Oakley, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for for hearing this. Um, we are looking at the property there. It's been vacant since February. And uh, in moving forward, we've got options for it. So this would expand the options that we're looking for in um using this as a lodging home for either men or women that are transitional housing. Um, people moving from unhoused situation to transitional housing, uh, and then moving them on to their own apartment or house. Uh, so we've had a a group called a CC House. They operate out of St. Louis. They're kind of acting as our model. And uh, we, I I think there's some documents in your um portfolio that we're kind of looking towards them as our our model. We asked them, they did come down, they looked at it along with Catholic charities. Um, right now, all of their facilities are in the city of St. Louis, and so for them to uh skip over St. Louis County, come down to Jefferson County would be a bit of a stretch for their uh resources. So, but they have offered us, uh, you know, guidance in this opportunity. Um, there are no facilities like this in town um that that we have at at the present time. Uh, so there is need for this transitional housing. Um, they estimate we can get uh anywhere from ten to twelve, maybe thirteen um apartments inside the building. Um, there's about forty-two hundred square feet on the first two floors. Uh, we would have to do a significant model uh remodeling of the building to make it to work for that. Uh, some of the rooms, every room would have their own bathroom. Uh, some of the larger rooms would be divided into bedrooms and bathrooms. Um, but uh, and we're just in the planning, starting just as an option. Uh, we'd rather do something like this for the community than outright sell it or just rent it to a business or a a family. Uh, we think this this would be a better use for our community at this time.
All right, sir. Thank you. Is there any council member that would like to have this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-seven eighty-seven for the second time in title only?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven eighty-seven for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, approving the conditional use permit for one fifteen Brierton and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven eighty-seven has passed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Moving right along. New business. I
will have uh Resolution forty-seven eighty-five and a half.
I guess we'll go right to um Resolution forty-seven eighty-five and a half. Madam Clerk, would you please read that resolution?
Resolution number forty-seven eighty-five and a half, a resolution of the City of Festus, Missouri, adopting the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five St. Louis Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Do we have a staff report?
Uh, Mayor, City Council, uh, annually, not annually, uh, presently, um, East West Gateway uh requires um municipalities uh in the St. Louis regional area uh that are gonna participate in the um regional mitigation plan uh to essentially pass this resolution in order to be eligible for funding in the event of a disaster. Uh, that is all in accordance to the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question. So in the in the past, you know, I've I've asked questions about like if we have uh like a railroad accident or if a chlorine leak or something like that, and it it kind of is on our shoulders, it seems like, in the surrounding communities. Is there, will this give us better uh integration with other um, with other cities, other municipalities to uh to enhance our response time and make it a safer area?
The, yeah, uh, the the process right now is the plan is being updated. Um, and so you have to declare your willingness to participate in the hazard mitigation plan. Um, so at the very least, what it does is puts us in a group with all the other communities in the St. Louis region. Uh, basically Jefferson Franklin County, St. Louis City and County um that um are also uh passing this resolution to participate in the plan. So it at least puts us all at the table. Um, the primary reason, of course, uh, to do it is uh to be eligible in the event that there is a a disaster, but it it does also uh allow us uh to share in any information uh that they would have as part of the development or or construction of the plan.
Thank you.
All righty. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number forty-seven eighty-five and a half.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook. Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
And that'll be the end of my mess.
Motion passes. And now we have bill forty-seven eighty-six on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri. Authorizing the issuance of special tax bills under chapter two fifteen of the city of Festus, Missouri Municipal Code. Certifying, certifying said special tax bills to the collector of the county of Jefferson to be collected with the city of Festus Real Estate Tax Bills and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven eighty-six is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Mayor, City Council, City Clerk Leah Smith has compiled, this is the annual list that we send to the county to certify special tax bills for obviously abatements that have been done in the last year.
Is there any discussion? Is there any councilman who wishes this bill to be carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven eighty-six for the second time in title only?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven eighty-six for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri. Authorizing the issuance of special tax bills under chapter two fifteen of the city of Festus, Missouri Municipal Code. Certifying said special tax bills to the collector of the county of Jefferson to be collected with the city of Festus Real Estate Tax Bills and establishing an effective date. Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven eighty-six has passed. That's it. Okay. Tonight, we have, we have an opening on the park board. And I would like to appoint Matt Bungenstock to the park board. I'll entertain a motion. Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. The appointment has been made. Okay, we do have a festival request for Main and Mill Street Fest, October twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
This is their annual street fest, so same, same party, different year. So Danny couldn't be here this evening. He is ensconced in a baseball season with his youngsters, so happy to answer any questions. We have not had any difficulty or problems in the, I believe, seven or eight years that they've been doing the street fest now.
It's actually been a pretty good little thing. It's expanded from a little thing to a big thing, so, you know. I'll entertain a motion to approve the festival request from Main and Mill Street. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Let Danny know he can forge ahead. Old business on street parking.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, wanted to circle back to this. We had this on the agenda during a work session in July. And I believe it was the work session where we delivered the new iPads and we just ran out of time. But I know this has been of concern to some, if not all of you, about problems we're having with whether it's trailers, specifically unattended or unattached trailers or large trucks and trailers in residential neighborhoods. I think a good example that's been brought up, Councilman Dennis and I were talking today. A lot of HOAs restrict that. All of the city of Festus is not an HOA. And therefore, the, the non-subdivision streets are not restricted in the same way that that you can have in, in some of the subdivisions based on their, their HOA rules and regulations. As we went through this and started talking about it, we noticed that most cities, if not all cities, use the Unified Traffic Code as a means with which to establish traffic laws. And in section, I should say, Article Eight, which deals specifically with stopping, standing, or parking, and prohibiting that in specific places. Our code follows right down the line, bang, 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 about what is allowed or not allowed, including in alleys, on narrow streets, on one-way streets. But there were two pieces that, at the time the code was adopted, for whatever reason, these two pieces were omitted. And they may be able to address the concerns that the mayor and council have. Section, the section, the two sections I'm talking about, the first one is parking of unattended or unattached trailers. Would make it unlawful for any unattended trailer, which is incapable of moving under its own power and not attached to a motor vehicle, to be parked on public streets, alleys, and thoroughfares. The other section, as I mentioned, parking trucks, trailers, et cetera, restricted in residential areas is a restriction on any bus, truck, tractor, trailer, house trailer, tractor, trailer, or truck-trailer combination. Any such vehicle or vehicle combination to be stood or parked for longer than two hours at any one time on any street in a residence, residential district of the city. Except a delivery truck may be parked in front of a place of business in such district during business hours, but subject to other parking, parking regulations affecting the particular location. So it, it seems as if the complaints that we are getting focus specifically on those two things. Either unattended trailers, ones that are not hooked up to anything at the time, or a, a large work truck, something more than a half or three-quarter ton pickup truck. So as you saw on my staff report, I think the, the item to be considered here is would council like one or both of kind of the described ordinances brought to them to be enacted that would be able to address some of these, these on-street parking issues?
I say both.
I agree.
Any others?
They are. Like you said, it's unfortunately like Kevin and I neighborhoods and stuff where you don't really live in a subdivision, say, and that's where you see that section, maybe some of these other little sections, you know, not the actual neighborhoods. And so yeah, I mean, people have been doing it for such a long time, boy, it's gonna be a, a fight.
Steeply and learning.
Oh, big time.
I'll wrench you a pad, Bobby.
I don't have anything, thank God, but it's, yeah, there's gonna be some fight on that probably, but because they've been doing it and now we want to, you know, but I don't know, I'm not sure that's gonna be a job for Chief Wendell, I guess, to tackle.
Chief and I talked about it today and, and he's aware of the fact that, that it is an enforcement issue. It's, it's something that, because we're, we're talking about licensed vehicles, licensed trailers, licensed trucks.
Right.
So the restriction for the trailers, obviously, is that they're unattached, a, a large work trailer or dump trailer. But it's not attached to anything at the time. It's just parked out on the curb. And then these larger vehicles, the, the tractor trailers, even a smaller, say, a dump truck or something like that. Putting a time restriction on, on those.
Oh, it's well needed. Don't get me wrong. There, there are a lot of situations you go by, you can't see around them or you can't get through because it does cause a problem, but I just I know it's gonna be a big hassle for a while, unfortunately, but something well needed, yes.
I'm presuming that a travel trailer would fit into an unattached trailer, campers.
It would.
I noticed this over the weekend on one of the side streets over by the school that now that we've added the sidewalks on both sides that are larger, there's not necessarily room to have a camper parked in the street or a larger transportation van that is, belongs to, you know, whatever company that it is parked on both sides. There's, it's effectively, we've made some of our streets, by the time you add parking, one-lane streets because the sidewalks are so large and just size of vehicle. So uncomfortable, yes. And I'm sure there will be some discretion given as far as enforcement, but, and yeah, we have some people that have been parking their campers in the street for decades. But I think it's, it's almost a necessity that we have to do something.
And I, I would, since you mentioned narrow streets, I, I would just, if you, if you haven't had a chance to, to read that section of the code book, I'm not expecting that you would have curled up with it last night. A section that is in there is the restriction on or prohibition of parking on narrow streets. That's already in our code. Essentially, when the roadway is less than twenty or less than thirty, it restricts the, the parking on at least one side of the street. That also requires us to do some signage on those streets as well. But that, that's something that's already on the books. This is a little bit more of, and again, I think probably at the time that these, these codes were adopted decades ago, there, there was probably a reason why these two were omitted. Mainly because I don't think you have the proliferation of subdivisions in Festus then, as you do now. I think when you see, you drive through a subdivision and you see nothing on the street, especially with an active HOA. And then when you drive through the regular residential sections of town and, and you see all sorts of things parked on the street in all manner of way, I, I can see where people get frustrated. Looking for perhaps equal protection in, in this, in this particular instance. So I'm more than happy to draft these two. They're, I don't have to draft anything. It's cut and paste. These are part of the Uniform Traffic Code and we can bring it back for the meeting in September.
So Greg, how would you monitor, like, like you were saying, HOAs usually have like a forty-eight hour or something like that? Or twenty-four to forty-eight hours? Because like even your campers, when you go camping, you're, you're loading, you're unloading. But unfortunately, they tend to overstate their welcome on the side of the streets, yeah. And then, and then you got people that are pulling dump trailers that might be working on the house. They could be there thirty-six, you know, seventy-two hours, whatever. So how do you, how, how do you monitor something like that?
Well, I think at the end of the day, Jim, one of Brian, I'm sure Lindsay's favorite words is reasonable. And it's a, it's a great word. It, it's, it's what's considered reasonable. And I, and I, while the, the code may say specifically, when we're talking about trucks, trailers, et cetera, with a two-hour window. I, I mean, unless you're absolutely dogmatic about it and you're gonna sit there with a stopwatch and when it hits one fifty-nine fifty-nine, you're calling the cops. I'm thinking those neighbors probably have other issues. But if it's, if it's there twenty-four hours, clearly it's in violation. Clearly, it's a situation where it's like, hey, we gotta call a complaint. You've had more than enough time, more than a reasonable amount of time. So, and, and at the end of the day, whether it's code enforcement or any of our officers, all we're looking for is compliance. Nobody wants to write anybody a ticket, right? What we want to do is just address the issue, take care of the problem, move along, you know, that sort of situation. So if the problem gets addressed, would it be exactly two hours? Probably not. If it was done in, say, thirty-six to forty-eight hours.
Are you really considering two hours? Because?
The code says two hours. The, the code can be structured however you like, obviously pending attorney review, but there, there would be no problem with saying with that second section that we were talking about. You know, should park for no longer than twenty-four hours at any one time or forty-eight hours at any one time. That can certainly be part of the language. It doesn't have to be two hours.
Let me play devil's advocate, though. So I'm working on my house, one of my houses, and I have a construction trailer parked in the road and I am just causing traffic issues all day. Do I have that right in a city to do that when this man needs to get a pumper down that road? No, park in your yard. So I don't have a problem with the time limit. It's, it's up to the officers. It's reasonable. It's discretionary. So it's, I don't think the issue is because the day somebody has to call nine-one-one and I've got five construction trailers after blocking the road, you wait till that door blows up and we're gonna worry about two or three-hour time limits? It's discretionary.
But I think, Mike, and, and I agree with you, but I, it's it's the campers, it's the campers, though. It's the campers. And then, and then I had a lady, I, I agree with that. But I, I've seen so much of that. And I mean, you know, like if we're gonna be working in front of a house, maybe two wheels of that trailer need to be on the sidewalk or something. But it's, it's just, Greg used the word, you know, reasonable. That should be in a book.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're gonna work, can't you get a permit, Mike, for the road that notifies public works? That there's gonna be a potential one-lane situation? Something to look into. That's what the county does. So if you're gonna physically, if you're gonna physically block a road, then everybody ahead of time has a heads up. Now you can kind of pre-plan and now you're thinking outside the box.
But Mike, are we talking about blocking the road or having overnight parking in the side of the road? Because I think that's what the, I think that's what we're talking about, isn't it?
That's what the ordinance is.
Right, right.
In, in, in my, in my twenty-year history, I think I've had two complaints and it was things that are left there months, years. Trailers, boats, things of that nature that have become a nuisance. And certainly, this, this would be at the discretion of the officers and on a priority level. That's, that's where I'm getting, there's just been a couple complaints, like I said, a couple over twenty-some odd years, but it gives you this ability in the event of it, somebody leaves a trailer full of scrap, which I have seen, hasn't been called in on, on the street. And it's actually caused a ruckus amongst neighbors of, of why this trash and all this has been left out. So it gives us that opportunity to kind of police up some things in the event of, I don't think this is something we need to go out and, and, and look for, but in the event we have a situation and we call the chief, then it gives him room to handle it under our ordinance. And, and that's why I'm for it. I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but over twenty-some odd years, I think I've had a couple that I agree were nuisance. And not to mention, you hit a trailer that isn't hooked anything and now you just launched a projectile down the road. But it does give us a little bit of teeth to enforce things that subdivisions, as most of you really will know, have these rules. You know, you're not supposed to blow your grass in the street, which I'm bringing up later, but with this too, it gives us the opportunity, in the event of we have a situation that we can deal with it under, under the law. So that's why I'm for it. And like I said, up on Scenic Drive today, there was a truck sticking halfway out in the road doing something and it was causing a it was causing a bit of traffic delay, but like I said, these things are gonna happen. We're a growing bustling city. So, but it does give the, in the event of situations, we can deal with them. Not something that we need to go around and look for problems, but in the event of we get a hold of the chief and he, uh, he handled it. So that's, that's my thought.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
So
Thank you.
So that this would be my, my, how I relate to this. If you're having a garage sale in Festus, you have to come into City Hall and get a little permit to have a garage sale, correct? If you're doing a longer, something at your home, there's probably a permit involved, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You're having a roof put on, you're having anything put on.
Right.
So if you're gonna have something that's going to be parked in the street that needs to be a little bit longer than the, the forty-eight hours or whatever, come in, hey, this trailer's gonna be parked or this is gonna be parked in front of the house. Here's my address. Here's who owns it. And Kevin said it himself, you create a projectile. So knowing who owns that thing, as well as if there's any other problems, if somebody sets it on fire, PD fired, they know who to contact. So if you may not be charging anybody to do that, but as a courtesy, hey, come by City Hall, let us know or wherever, public works, let us know that you got this going on. So we know that it's there. PD knows it's there. Fire department knows it's there. And it's not such a big surprise as far as the campers that, I mean, ultimately, yeah, loading, going twenty-four, forty-eight hours, but beyond that, they don't need to be parking on the street.
That's where the road permit can tie in, uh, and that's perfect.
Yeah. I mean, we, we need to know who's, who owns it. We don't wanna prohibit you from doing what you need to do, but we also need to know what the anticipated, yeah. I mean, is it gonna be there for two days or two months?
So it, it sounds like, um, with both of these, we need to get a better handle on, um, what's an acceptable time limit and the two hours for something that doesn't require anything special. If it's, if it's a, uh, a truck and a trailer, two hours, you get above that, if it's parked there, you need to have a permit if you're doing work in the area. If you're doing work on the street, if you're doing work on the house that's next to the street, um, as far as the unattended or unattached ones, that I, 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 I think maybe as it was presented here, uh, this evening is adequate. Uh, because it is, it is basically, it's an unattended trailer. As, as Councilman Dennis referred to it, a, a projectile, um, especially if it's struck by a, a larger vehicle. So if, if you'll give me some time to find some good language related to a good time limit and whether, uh, there is a, a simple, easy way uh, for us to deal with, uh, longer stays uh, on city streets. Um, so if someone needs, say, five days because it's a roofing contractor and they're gonna have a, a dump trailer there to haul off the old shingles and they're gonna bring in a trailer with the new shingles, they're gonna be there for, uh, uh, more than a, more than twenty-four hours. Um, so, uh, coming up with a reasonable amount of time and then bring that back to you uh, for your, for your continued discussion.
I think it also needs to be secured properly and parked. I mean, I live on North Mill. Let's face it, you want a projectile, it's coming down North Mill. But the people that park these trailers and campers on the street, they don't have a hitch lock. So now you're gonna call us because somebody stole your unsecured camper out in front of your house. Nobody should have stolen it, but at least take some, chalk the wheels, yeah, chalk the wheels, do something to.
What's the biggest, I mean, what, what is the biggest item that's parked on the side of the road that's?
I, I think what's at least been brought to me, uh, Jim, has been these, these unattended or unattached trailers. Uh, so when I brought both of these up tonight, I thought for sure, if you were going to recommend one or both to come back for approval, it would be the, uh, unattended or unattached. Um, a, a, a trailer just out on its own. Like you said, uh, you know, they can chalk the wheels all day long. They can put a lock on the hitch, but if it sits there for a month, um, that's probably too long. Um, and, and, and obviously something that would never be allowed in one of our HOAs, um, one of our subdivisions.
That's the key because, uh, you know, most of the guys that are gonna be working on something are gonna have a permit, I, I would think.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and to me, that's not that sight unsightly because they leave, you know, but when you just park a trailer on the street and unhook it, they're just leaving it there because they have no place else to park it.
Right.
And, and so that's unsightly, it's dangerous. I actually, uh, parked a trailer on the street one time and a car hit it in the middle of the night, like two o'clock in the morning and towed the car out, shot my, Kevin's right, shot my trailer down the street. Um, so that does happen, but you know, should have been there, maybe not. But I think the guy was intoxicated, so it's kind of, you know.
There were other laws being broken that evening. So, uh, if, if it's okay with council, um, it sounds like the, the, the majority here is that both of these pieces uh, are pieces that you want brought to you. Um, but, uh, perhaps working a little bit more on the two-hour limit, um, when we're talking about, um, the restrictions of residential areas on, on, on anything that also has the ability to still move itself. So a truck and a trailer.
So Greg, what about, what about cars that are, you know, they're not running even though they're licensed? I don't think they should be able to sit on the streets for days, months, whatever either. Uh, it's, it's, it's a big can of worms we're opening, I think, but, but.
And that was probably why council didn't, in whatever year it was, didn't enact these two sections.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, the, not finding them as part of our code wasn't really a surprise. Uh, knowing that, you know, there's obviously other communities that, that just basic, basically take the, the MUTCD and adopt it, you know, book front to book back. Um, I'm sure there, there are complications to come with that as well. Again, whatever, whatever you would like to do.
Well, work something out and bring it back to us.
I will bring something back for, for review.
Okay. Was there any other discussion? Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to give, uh, kudos out to Mark Harris's, uh, department. Uh, we've had a lot of, uh, complaints in our area and Mark's, uh, crew has been working them and is getting cleaned up over there. So certainly appreciate that, Mark. And, uh, that's about all I have right now, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Weiner.
Um, Councilman Cook and I went to a Tanglefoot meeting a couple of days ago. It was really a productive meeting. I'd like to thank you, Mike, for showing up there. He presented a recycling program for downtown Main Street. And, uh, it was really well received by all the Tanglefoot participants that were there. Um, so pretty excited about that. Um, I talked a little bit about the South Second Parking Lot that's, uh, gonna be happening fairly soon. Everybody was, uh, really happy about downtown being rejuvenated, redone, safer sidewalks, et cetera, in the future. Uh, more parking, better lighting, better egress from South Second up, up to Main. So there was a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of positive talk about that. Um, I had Main Key Realty who actually volunteered to, uh, fill those planters up with mums. So they will be doing that soon. They'll be, uh, getting some mums from a local, um, produce slash flower stand in town here. And, um, no, I think, uh, I was talking with Greg today, you know, and he asked me if, uh, if there was anything that, uh, something to the effect of, wh- what have I overlooked? I said, you know, there's so many good things going on right here. Um, we've worked long and hard really to get things to where they are and a lot of, a lot of good stuff coming up under, uh, with, uh, with your help, Greg, and under your, um, guidance, Mayor, that, uh, I think things are looking great and I'm just happy and proud to be part of the process. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dennis.
Um, in reference to, uh, the, the public comments made tonight about the, uh, the Horine area, um, in our packet, we hear the police report and we made over a hundred and fifty-eight traffic stops. Uh, and that's in like thirteen days. Uh, we have a, a traffic sign there and he, with my own eyes, I have seen multiple cruisers, uh, patrolling this area. So i- it isn't like we're, we're neglecting this. Our officers are out there a hundred and fifty-some odd traffic stops in thirteen days. Uh, and there, we're getting the attention on Horine and Central and, uh, but I, but I take a little bit of offense to that and I have to step up and say, our officers are out there working and doing this. And with Doug, uh, asking for this traffic, uh, officers, this is in addition to, I talk with the chief and this doesn't mean everyone else is not riding traffic. This is extra help towards these goals of a, a society that is in a hurry, uh, is talking on the phone, going too fast on all these other issues, but, uh, we are patrolling, uh, Ward Three, specifically Horine and Central, which we've had some issues. Our police department is very receptive. Every chance they get, they're over there watching as well as a whole bunch of other real estate in our city. So, uh, I have to stand up and say something to that. Uh, and it certainly isn't the answer that the mayor will give him, but that's my opinion, being a lifelong resident and a councilman here for many years. Uh, so I, I have to say, we are addressing the problem and it's a, it's a, it's, it's an everywhere problem. Everybody's in a hurry. I had to take my son to St. Louis to the doctor today. Uh, and, uh, there's a lot of traffic issues out there. Everybody's dealing with something. But, uh, with that said, a, another really concerning problem that I see is people are cutting their grass and blowing it in the street. And I know Mark and I've had this conversation. There's grass growing out of the sidewalks. People won't attend to the little areas in front of them, but perhaps a friendly reminder in one of Barb's publications that please don't, please don't do that. That's a risk to motorcyclists. Uh, it goes down our sewers, it clogs things up. Uh, maybe on something paper, not social media wise, so maybe in the next bulletin, it goes out with the water bill. Uh, don't want to open a can of worms, but it's, it's concerning. I've seen two or three places to where people are just blatantly blowing their grass out and, and one spot, the grass hadn't been attended to. And it was probably two inches deep, uh, around a curve. And I, I just think that's an issue. And I don't know that we can go out there and have the grass policed, but I'm just saying perhaps a friendly reminder. Uh, yes, too, uh, the city is, is addressing all the problems and as a council, we work together. Uh, be it whatever issues, we've made huge strides, our water plants, uh, anything, we're working on it. The guys and gals are out there every day working in all departments. And I, I certainly say thank you for all that good work, but, uh, that's all I have tonight, sir. I just wanted to step up and say that, uh, having someone actually seen the patrols and all the things we're trying to do and trying to put some support behind this, uh, uh, package it does presenting us that he's worked very hard on with his reassurance that we're trying to make things better. So that's all I have.
All righty, sir. Thank you. Councilman Cook.
Um, Michael, this will be to you because Greg's voice is probably about gone. Please tell the water crews, thank you so much and keep laying those lines. Um, we spent well over four million dollars. I know we got a private contractor plus our crews out there. Um, seems like our Evan, right? Evan's our water supervisor. Zach, oh, we're having, yeah, but there's, yeah, but him, Chuck, board and all them, uh, tell them thank you because it seemed like they're doing a great job and we're trying our best to get a handle on it. And Jim, I, I think you're on to something. I, and I think Stacy's idea was also, I think this road permit could really solve a lot of issues. Cause, um, I don't want a trailer parked on the sidewalk. I don't see the harm in a trailer, like in construction trailer being worked, parked there. But like a Mrs. Perrin and Mrs. Voges who's reached out to me through Facebook, just to give you a few examples, because we were kind of talking, um, their neighbor parks an overnight truck for days, like a diesel. Uh, the other neighbor parks a camper. But then the other neighbor does park a construction trailer to his truck and will leave it there for four or five days when he's out of town. So that was the concerns they have and their road is smaller. They did indicate that. But I think the road permit would really clear things up and we can give advance notice to PD and to fire, uh, and kind of work together on that. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you. Councilman Carter.
I think everybody's addressed my concerns, so I have nothing, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Templeton.
Uh, question, the house at seven twenty-five North Mill, now that we've made progress with that, can the city take care of the grass cutting or not yet?
What's the status on seven twenty-five? Is it in?
Still, yeah, he's got a call.
Okay.
Kind of, uh, we, we are mowing it after we have, after we posted. It takes ten days.
Mm-hmm.
Of course we'll come back and mow it.
It's like the, the number one complaint I get, just because the grass right now is probably close to two feet tall. So, uh, the other one was six oh four and six oh seven Valentine. Um, six oh four has a piece of the fence that blew down and there's a pasture in the backyard as well as looks like a lot of trash and debris that you can see now because the fence is down. And then the other one across the street, I, I think that complaint was just taller grass.
I think we've talked about one of those in the six hundred block of Valentine before, so.
Yeah.
But we'll follow up on them tomorrow.
Yep.
Six oh four and six oh nine?
Six oh four and six oh seven.
Seven.
Thank you. And this is kind of unrelated, but Spire has been working obviously in the city.
Mm-hmm.
And they've been out there every day that I've gone to work and it's one of the smoothest in my opinion, situations that we've had, like they get in, get out, get done, from what I can see and no complaints from anybody in the neighborhood.
If I could just say, um, since it's come up, uh, when we created the position of, uh, right away manager, it was not to keep an eye on Spire. Um, they, they know what to do. They know how to do it and, uh, they are very easy for us to work with.
Yep. Aside from that, it's, it's just great to see everything going. It's pickleball, obviously. That's always a good one to see people out there and the variety of ages, but just in general, how the city looks and Main Key is always there to step up for stuff. Brittany and her crew are phenomenal. So I'm glad that they'll take over the planters and we'll have some color on for fall. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Venn.
Yeah, living on Horine. I mean, I feel for Mike because he's my neighbor, but a, and the police are out there. It just, you know how it works. Soon as they leave, it, it is bad. I, I mean, you're never gonna get it perfect and I, I know it's gonna be tough. I mean, button stop signs up. I know that's the worst thing to do. I know, and maybe it stops them, yeah, but at the same time, then you start rolling stop signs. You start flying through the stop signs and there's not a good answer or a perfect answer for that. The bump that I talked to you about, the those speed bumps or whatever, those bumps that you said I had to get residents to be all far on Horine or something that we, we talked about.
We may have some surprises.
Okay. All right. And, but like you said, stop signs, I know there's nobody a big fan of stop signs.
We don't wanna tip them off.
Okay. But, um, but, but yeah, I have, I'm like Kevin, I, I do see the, the police out there and I mean, they are, they've been up there at, uh, up there at Cliff where a lot of bad stuff's been going up to Rankin and all that area. And I heard some residents and stuff and they, it, it's just a problem everywhere. I mean, you guys are out there. I see you out there, see you doing what you can, but you know, as soon as you make the curves, it seems like boom, green light, boy, everybody's gone. Um, one question, I didn't have time on the work session. We're using general fund to, to, um, put this splash pad in, right?
Um, the, the funding, uh, which was a set, was set aside during this fiscal year, uh, was from general fund reserve. Um, so that's our, yeah.
And we usually will always, hopefully we'll have a reserve every year. And we won't have, the bills won't come in for many years, like you said, to wear and tear of a splash pad and barn and all that. Why can't we just always use a percentage of that instead of taking it away from parks or this and that?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm, I was afraid I might get misunderstood, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad you asked the follow-up. Um, from an accounting standpoint, from an auditing standpoint, uh, a parks asset is going to be paid for out of the park fund. Uh, the money that goes into the park fund doesn't necessarily come from just the park stormwater tax or from the property tax. Um, so those funds could come into the park fund from the general fund, as you just mentioned.
So we could just add to it?
Absolutely.
Just to help, so it doesn't take away something he needs or something.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think at any point did any member of this, this body anticipate saying, okay, Josh, uh, your operating budget for the splash pad is eighty-five thousand dollars. Where are you gonna get it from? Um, that's not, that I don't, we know that was never the intent.
Right.
Um, so yeah, there's gonna be an ongoing cost. It's just, it's the same when we know when we hire an employee. We know there's an ongoing cost that comes with that. The splash pad is going to become, uh, uh, one of our employees, so to speak. It's gonna entertain children, young and old of all abilities.
I mean, the reserve fund's good for a few things that we might have to dip into every once I mean, the reserve fund's good for a few things that we might have to dip into every once in a while to help out any of the departments that we might come across that might need something, not just, you know, certain, you know, ones, but, um, no, I just thought we could possibly use that because hopefully we will keep a good reserve in the future and like we have been and unless something unforeseen happens majorly, but, um, that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Tenon.
Uh, Michael, the, uh, new water lines going in on Ann Street and Warren Street, do I have that right? There, it's, are they replacing the old ones with new plastic ones in?
The old ones are abandoned in place and then as we get the new ones in, they have to be tested. They'll be tied into the new ones on fourth and fifth and then, uh,
Okay, I just wanted to say, you know, you guys have done a great job on that. I mean, it's, I, I do get a phone call here and there complaining about the gravel on the road and this and that and it's like, uh, you gotta have gravel on the road and stuff, uh, to make something better. And, uh, I'm, I'm really happy when you guys get done, like over on Fourth Street and all that. Uh, everything was cleaned up nice and the concrete looks good covering it back up and have a good job there. And then, uh, uh, I think we're gonna need some new pickleball cords here coming up. I'd like to look. It's, uh.
You're not the first person to say that to me today. The statement was, we're gonna need more pickleball cords.
Did I say that wrong?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna need more pickleball cords. I'm sorry. Uh, because I have had a few complaints that people can't get on to, uh, existing pickleball cords.
Um, early pickleballer gets the worm.
Yeah, yeah. Sign with rules and regulations of how we, how people play, maybe, I don't know. Um, something else, uh, oh, in the flower pots, uh, I can't wait to see those flowers blooming out of those pots, you know? It's a good job. That's all I have.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Could I jump in for just a moment, sir?
Go right ahead.
No, no.
I'm right ahead.
Allow Leah to collect herself. Um, eh, I, I don't know if all of you, I mentioned this to a couple of folks today. I know Mayor and I were talking about it. Um, and I, I hate to make the meeting go a little bit longer, but here I am. Um, proving to Mike that my voice still works. Um, eh, you, you probably don't get the Daily Journal. It's a newspaper that covers basically St. Francis County and surrounding counties. Um, I, I still read it. It's, you know, where, uh, it's, it covers the town I used to work in and, and obviously I still have friends and family down there. Uh, on the front page of the Daily Journal today was an article, uh, about the St. Genevieve City Council. St. Genevieve City Council's doing the same thing you're doing right now, which is working on your budget and they're working on their budget with, uh, Mr. Happy Welch, who used to be your city administrator, uh, some time ago. And the article focuses predominantly on fund reserve policy. They spent a whole meeting discussing whether or not they should bring their fund reserve policy, which is at fifty percent, a place you were five years ago. Uh, that, that, that may have got to fifty, I don't know. I wasn't gonna say. But, um, eh, the, the, the questions being asked of the administration uh, and of the department heads, um, and amongst the council members themselves. But they were talking specifically about fund reserve policy and whether or not they should move off of that fifty percent number. Um, and, and Administrator Welch, uh, talked to them about how a lot of cities typically work in a thirty-five percent range, uh, which is obviously a place where we operate now. Um, so if you do get, it, it, it's got a paywall on it, so you can read the first start of the article. It's free and then after that you have to pay, but if you happen to, uh, be interested in a neighboring community uh, and whether or not they're dealing with similar issues as to the city of Festus, they're dealing with issues that we were dealing with five or six years ago. Uh, I just thought it was interesting and I wanted to, wanted to mention it, uh, tonight. So, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, I think we've covered everything that I might want to talk about this evening, so if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made to adjourn and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. We are adjourned.